Hey, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August thirteenth, twenty twenty four meeting of the Easton Meadow Town Council. It's now six P M. And I'll call the meeting to order if we could stand for the flag allegiance.
Flag allegiance of the United States of America into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, now take them when a silence to reflect on all the events. At this moment abroad. Thank you. All right, first item is just in accordance with Master and our law, this meeting is being video recorded as I have got. And if there's anyone else in the audience, if you can identify yourself, seeing none, we will move on to public comments. Is there anyone that would like to make a public comment for the council if it's not further item on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to council comments. Does any council have a comment? Right, so then we will move on to the report.
Oh, good evening, everyone. Um, so, uh, construction continues at the high school. Most of the enabling work is starting to take shape. Um, the new parking area has been installed, the horseshoe. You know, obviously, a lot of the the construction that's happening now is so that they can actually do work when school is in session. Um, so they're getting a lot of that squared away. The um, access road to the back of the building where obviously most of the construction will take place has been installed. The school building committee recently voted um, to submit the sixty percent design to the MSBA. Uh, that was at our meeting on July twenty third. I believe we've already received comments back from the MSBA on that, so that's moving along. Um, construction's complete on uh, aside from a few punchless items on the sidewalks on Pleasant Street. Um, from Indian Spring to Porter, um, and on Hampden Road, um, from Parker to Angela Lane. Uh, our contractor, DP Berace, obviously worked very swiftly and efficiently um, to complete the whole project in a matter of weeks. Um, so nice job to them and and the DPW for fostering the project. Paving's also underway uh, on Ridge Road, East Circle and North Circle. We had a water main project there a couple of years ago. Um, we installed some drainage, uh, there's been quite a bit of uh, pavement deterioration from the water in that area. So, um, DPW, uh, before we got the paving contractor on, had installed some French drains in our right away uh, adjacent to the pavement. Um, so uh, Warner Brothers is now in there milling, overlaying, uh, adjusting structures as needed, um, and installing curving. So I think we're looking to be substantially complete by the end of the month. And then, obviously, my favorite phrase from GPW, weather permitting, subject to change. We have hired a new HR director, um, Audra Staples. Uh, her first day is next Tuesday, August twentieth. Uh, she uh, comes to us uh, from Westcom, um, but she also previously worked in HR for months in Long Meadow. So quite a bit of um, municipal HR experience, which was sort of our main focus. Um, as with most, most things, industries on the municipal side are different than the private side and and HR is no different. So we really stress that uh, as a requirement, uh, so we're happy to have her as part of the team. I can step down as HR director, which I'm sure everyone's happy about. Uh, so yeah, pop in and see her after uh, Tuesday next week. Um, she's out, she'll be at uh, three eighty two North Main. Um, okay, Jamie, you have the tissues ready? So we have to, uh, unfortunately, well, I guess we're just gonna say he's retiring. Don Mackey after uh, nineteen years of service of town of Easton Meadow at Elcat, sixteen of which at the direct, as the director. I won't, I won't go into too much, and we don't have time to discuss uh, all of Don's accomplishments and what he's done for our community. Uh, personally, professionally, um, and I know everyone's gonna miss him. Um, he, he is an intelligent, caring, thoughtful individual, um, and one of my favorite conversationalists of all time. If you ever have three or four hours to kill, stop by. Yeah, um, honestly, congrats, Don.
Tom, I don't need to be behind the screen. Watching you, but you're fixing.
Yeah, I, congrats. I I sincerely uh, look forward to the next time we get to chat.
Me too, absolutely, thank you.
Congrats. We also recently reached an agreement uh, for the taking of three eighty two North Main Street. The, the documents of that uh, agreement are in there. We're in a sort of a due diligence area here with uh, a updated um, appraisal, uh, further inspection. And sort of putting all the administrative things together so that um, you have all the information you need to make a vote. Most likely at our first meeting in September. Um, almost everything has sort of been vetted out at this point. Um, it'll just be putting everything uh, in order so that you guys are are set to vote uh, in September. We got some upcoming events, uh, Center Town District Discussion uh, is at Thursday, August fifteenth, uh, six to eight P M. At East Village Tavern. Um, so the uh, the conversation continues uh, about the Center Town District. So feel free to stop in and say hi and uh, you know, we're still, still want everybody's input. So the more input we get, the more we can uh, put a, put out a product for the entire community. So uh, Cultural Council's uh, Arts and Brew Festival, uh, August twenty fourth, uh, twelve to five P M. At four forty five Baldwin Street. Uh, which is Brew Practitioners. Um, that has historically been a great event, so if you have time on the twenty fourth, head over there. Magicians, uh, art, muse, live music, a lot of, a lot of live music, I guess. So um, head down and enjoy yourself on the twenty fourth. And we have coffee with the town manager here, uh, September fourth, ten thirty A M. We, just a couple of updates that I didn't submit that have happened. Kim and everyone from finance has been working diligently to close out FY twenty four, which was, we got the email at four forty eight this afternoon. Uh, no issue whatsoever, uh, so our auditors will be in uh, final week of August, first week of September. Um, and we most likely, I think we looked at the schedule last year, we need revenue numbers for September thirtieth. Then we can submit for free cash certification, and that probably will take place the first meeting in October. I'm not sure what the date is, but uh, I think it was the eleventh last year, so that that seems like that lines up. Um, and that's all I got for tonight.
Great, thank you, Tom. Does anyone have any questions? All right, seeing none, we will move to communications correspondence and announcements. First item is proclamation for Don Mackey on behalf of the town council. So of course, as Tom alluded to, uh, Don Mackey has been working for the town for quite a long time, and especially with Elcat. And presenting the meetings to the public in an accessible format and getting the information out there, which has been amazing. But he also has a rich history before that, both in art and writing, and he will continue to do so with the Easton Meadow Film Festival that he's co-founding. Beyond retirement and uh, also producing a short feature film. So he will definitely be active in the community and around to move forward. So on behalf of the town council, be it hereby known to all that the town of Easton Meadow offers its deepest appreciation. Best wishes to Donald J. Mackey for his nineteen years of service and dedication to Elcat and sixteen years as director. Twelve years as organizer of National Night Out, four years as broadband committee chair, and his many accomplishments and contributions in the art and design industry. Dated this thirteenth day of August, twenty twenty four, uh, the town council, on behalf of myself, Connor O'Shea.
Thank you, Connor.
The next item is the IT ad hoc committee update. Anna, would you mind providing? Or Ralph?
Ralph, okay. So um, myself, Ralph, and Kathy Matt, I don't remember the date. But when he, nine, ninth of July, July, with uh, Tom and with Ken, who's not here. Um, we were discussing the IT um, budget, how it was um, the deficit for the um, salary. Salaries, thank you. Um, and to be honest with you, I wasn't at the meeting that you guys discussed it at. So I, I, I wasn't there to discuss it at the meeting, but when we got there, um, Tom explained that she was well aware of the deficit and um, it just happened that the IT software line item was also um, in surplus, so it actually worked out well. But I believe going forward, you guys have now implemented a new um, policy, yeah, policy, so that way it was not happen again. But I, but I think overall, it was, he was aware of it. Um, and the fact that the um, IT software was not fully spent, so it worked out well. But I think going forward, that won't happen again.
So if you don't mind, uh, one of the main things that we were concerned about was the forty thousand dollar surplus. Right. And based on knowing how much software costs and all, how did we come up with forty thousand dollars more? And so we reached out to Ryan, and he explained that um, some of the computers and all are so old or were so outdated. They couldn't even take the update for the software, so they didn't have to spend the money on the updates. Which made a lot of sense, and he was able to break it down. I mean, line item by line item, which was fantastic, but I don't think we can rely on getting forty thousand dollars every year. They, they've taken care of that, and like I said, going forwards, any computers that have to be updated will be, so the software will be able to, to keep up to date.
Great, anything else?
Well, that's a good recap.
And we move on to I C, which is the Affordable Home Homes Act, allowing accessory dwelling units. This was just more of a informational thing that'll be coming, I'm sure, as a topic of discussion for future council and planning board meetings. But um, Governor Keeley uh, recently signed the Affordable Homes Act into law, which essentially allows accessory dwelling units by right. And of course, presently, our bylaws had more restrictions on that, so there will be some amount of change, I'm sure, that will be coming forward. But that doesn't go into effect state law wise until same time in early February. So at the moment, in Easton Meadow, it's still not allowed by right until changes are made. So just as a form of communication for the public.
And those discussions have already begun in planning.
Right, yeah.
So Connor, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Um, so through the planning department, are they going to be open, public hearings and stuff with regards to this? I know, um, I'm already receiving phone calls, questions, um, concerns, um, especially based on an accessory use. Current bylaw allows an accessory dwelling to be five feet from the property if it's ten feet behind the house. And the concern is, oh my God, I'm basically gonna have a mini house right next to my property line, and what if I want one there? And then they're only ten feet apart, and I mean, there's hundreds of questions that just erupted from all of this.
And honestly, we haven't dug deep yet enough to to, but we will be looking at all of, all the requirements in all of the zones to make sure. Obviously, we have to do whatever we're required to do by law, by statute, but um, I think there's probably, like most things, room for the towns to do what they need to do with their zoning. Do you have anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, so the planning director, Rob Bocilla, has a presentation planned for the planning board on September seventeenth at their second meeting of the month. Um, and it'll just be an overview, um, because of course, the details for how we want that to look locally. Um, we have until February to figure out those contours.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Connor, sure.
Moving forward, now, this isn't gonna surprise anybody, but I'm really concerned about this change. And um, do we as a town have any leverage at all legally in terms of establishing our own criteria? Perhaps restrictions, I mean, they've said no owner occupancy allowed by right, you can have a house on every lot. And where does um, our um, home, home rule legislation come in?
Yeah, so.
Have any options before us?
Most of these questions were asked that are, we, we, they, there's planning department meeting every Tuesday morning, and most of these questions have already come up. So our attorney is pouring through the legislation now to find out where we can move and where we can't. There's, yeah, I know, I know you are, Ralph.
Makes for good reading on the weekend.
All right, if there's nothing else, we will move on to public hearings. It is now six sixteen, springtime, so this is people making a liquor license change of stock interest for Shaker Bowl.
Good evening.
Good evening. Haven't seen you in a couple of months.
Yes, let me just open that. So this is a public hearing for a liquor license change of stock interest for Shaker Bowl Inc., located at one sixty eight Shaker Road. The council members present are Jim Laden, Kathy Hill, Anna Jones, myself, Connor O'Shea, Marilyn Richards, and Ralph Page. And I would ask the clerk to read the legal notice into the record.
Notice is hereby given under chapter one thirty eight of the general laws that Shaker Bowl Incorporated, DBA Shaker Bowl, at one sixty eight Shaker Road, Eastland Meadow, has applied for liquor license change of stock interest. The town council will hold a public hearing on the application on Tuesday, August thirteen, twenty twenty four, at six fifteen in the Council on Aging Media Room, three twenty eight North Main Street, Eastland Meadow, Mass. The hearing can also be attended via Zoom webinar, for the council, Jeanne R. Quagletti, town clerk, clerk of the council.
Great, thank you, Jeanie, and I will now open it up to uh, Ambassador Chip Volan.
Yep, uh, so my name is Josh Goldstein, attorney from Bacon Wilson, and I'm here on behalf of Shaker Bowl.
And I'm Adam Oliveri, here representing the ownership group. Good to see you guys tonight.
Yep, uh, so this is a very, uh, fairly straightforward transaction uh, between the husband and wife. Uh, wife was a silent investor, is transferring uh, her seven percent ownership interest to her husband, uh, who will also be a, a silent investor. Uh, phenomenal consideration that the, um, they're not involved in the day to day operations of the business. This is more of a technical change and procedural change rather than any actual changes to the operation of the business. Um, transfer has no actual impact there, um, so that's, it's fairly straightforward in that regard.
Great, and since this is a public hearing, I will now open it if there's anyone in the audience that would like to offer input. If you could state your name and address and your comments. All right, seeing none, I will then close the public input portion of the hearing. Is there anything that the council would do, ask or discuss?
Pretty straightforward.
Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion to close public hearing.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
Do we have to do roll call?
I don't know if John's present.
Yeah.
Not present, and there's no roll call.
See.
And then we'll entertain a motion to approve.
I move to approve the liquor license change of stock interest application for Shaker Bowl Incorporated, doing business as Shaker Bowl at one sixty eight Shaker Road.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, is there any further discussion? As seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
Great.
You're all. Pink stands.
We'll move on to number eight orders of the day, and licensing matters. Number one is a disciplinary hearing for Elm Press Country Club, due to non-compliance with town departments. So.
Sorry, we couldn't hear you back.
I will try to speak up.
I'll be here back there.
All right, so this, this time it's a hearing to there the discipline uh, for Elm Press Country Club, non-compliance with town departments. So it's a little bit of context back on July nineteenth. Before, I had drafted a letter and sent it to Elm Press Country Club to notify them of this hearing before us tonight on August thirteenth. And this is to consider uh, essentially revoking or not renewing the liquor license that Elm Press Country Club holds due to various non-compliance issues with town departments. And supporting documentation was sent with that letter as well, and it was all sent with certified mail and receipt to our town clerk. Kathy is the chair of the licensing committee, is there any additional uh?
Well, some, the, the context is, is uh, substantially uh, detailed. Some seven years ago, the country club experienced an unfortunate uh, fire on the premises due to careless disposal of smoking materials. And then also later that month, the building had a fire which was caused by an overloaded electric cord. All of, both of those events rendered the uh, property um, not able to be used, certainly. Keep my glasses on to look at my notes here. Electricity and utilities were shut off to the property per fire regulations, of course. On the twenty first, I'm sorry, the April the twelfth of twenty twenty one, the fire department issued an order of notice uh, regarding several violations, uh, one of which is the uh, storage of flammable uh, liquids that had not, not up to that point been addressed. Uh, in twenty twenty two, it uh, became uh, known to the fire department that the facility owner had completed demolition work of the damaged portions of the building without taking out permits through the town. Uh, the work removed the existing fire protection sprinklers, alarms, sheet rock, drop ceiling, several interior wall partitions and interior stairs. Uh, at this point, the building was rendered unsafe, and the fire department marked the four building sides with a four foot by four foot red X, that's a universal um, sign known in the fire industry as a dangerous situation which uh, instructs firefighters not to enter such a structure, regardless of the uh, severity of the uh, fire, if were there to be one. Because of that, again, um, because the fire uh, suppression system was removed without permit or written permission from the uh, fire department, uh, that directly violated Mass General Law one forty eight twenty seven A. Uh, to this day, no permit has been uh, issued or approved for the removal um, from the office of the fire department. Fast forward to January of twenty twenty four, members of the fire department, building department, town council, and health department met with the um, owners of the um, Elm Press Country Club, uh, David Flurry, and um, discussed the conditions of the property and what the plan that was going forward, because the uh, facilities present there briefly fabricated um, small buildings, much like the, the uh, pre-made sheds you see on Oak's property, was being used as uh, like a pro shop, as well as a storage and serving place for um, beverages. The building commissioner found that the building, that particular structure was in non-compliance. It had not had what I believe is regarded to a three oh four inspection, Ralph, does that make sense? And what that means escapes me right now, however, it, one has not occurred. Um, the health department uh, director said that the facility was not in compliance. And to the extent that a food permit, uh, food and beverage permit could be a non-alcoholic beverage permit could be issued. And of course, the fire department reiterated its concerns about uh, the unsafe conditions of the um, burnt property. Um, notwithstanding, and I was not present at that meeting, but my understanding is Mr. Flurry indicated that there was interest on his part. Uh, an attorney, please, uh, if I'm misstating anything, uh, please say so. That he had some intent to move forward um, to uh, make the property suitable for whatever his next plans were. And there was a sentiment that he was going to be approaching the planning board to ask for a, a site review for his special permit. Long story short, it's seven years, the all alcohol license, which allows the serving of um, alcohol, beer, and wine on premise, uh, has not really been fully utilized. Uh, the owner has had multiple opportunities to reach out to the town to uh, rectify the situation. And um, we're at this juncture that it does not, there's no outward appearance that um, any substantive move to improve or alter the premises uh, is being undertaken. So it was the recommendation of the um, licensing subcommittee that the council uh, revoke this license and, and take it back to the town, which brings us to tonight's.
Thank you for the overview, Kathy. You're welcome. Um, I'll now open it up to you if you'd like to offer any.
Good evening, Benjamin Coyle, on behalf of the licensee, I have one of the principals here with me tonight, Mr. Gregory Lindenmuth. The summary is very accurate, um, and it was at this uh, golf season, is the first golf season that the golf course hasn't been open. That was a very difficult decision for uh, the ownership to make this year. It wasn't one that was made lightly, but given all the factors that were involved, it determined that from a business perspective, it was not gonna be able to open this year. In the last meeting that uh, this council had, I appeared on behalf of the licensee, had just been retained. Um, since that time, um, I've had multiple discussions with the ownership group, and they completely understand the town's concern with the use of the license. They also understand that they're not gonna be able to open and utilize this license in the immediate future. That is just a reality that they have had to face. It's not one that they take lightly, it's one that they wish they could change. Um, they were victim of circumstance with litigation and everything that ensued relative to the multiple fires that occurred at the property. With all of that said, and knowing that this council um, would like to see the license utilized, the licensee would like to propose the option to attempt to sell the license between now and the uh, renewal time for the license. In the event that it's unable to enter into a, an agreement to sell the license between now and then, it will voluntarily relinquish the license back to the town, will not seek to renew it. It is the hope that they will have a plan with regard to the golf course and proposed uses and the overall scheme of what they're gonna do there within the next few months or, or maybe even years, because it's gonna take time in order for that to occur. Knowing that the town is at its quota, based on our discussion last time, I think this is the only license that really isn't being used, and there aren't any available based on our discussions last time. That in the event that their plan is to open up a golf course. That in the event that their plan is to open up a golf course and to utilize a license at that premises, that we may be back before this council to seek special legislation to get an additional license for that property. It is intricate to a golf course to have the ability to serve alcohol. And in the event that they continue on with the golf course, they're going to need that. And I understand that nothing can be bound by this board to another or this council to another council. But it would be our hope that the town in general would look favorably on that application and would assist in the pursuit of getting an additional license in the event that that comes to fruition. So the proposal is that we have the opportunity to set to sell it. And of course, it would have to change location, right? It's not going to happen there. And then in the event that we're unable to do so by the end of the year, the town gets it back. We won't renew it.
And Ben, thank you. And Greg Lindenmuth again, and I do represent the the ownership. And a comment that you made on on the seven years, I can completely understand it from the town standpoint. But what Elmcrest went through and what we went through for the last seven years, it was almost a David and Goliath event against Philadelphia Insurance Company. And it expended all of our time, all of our resources. At the end of the day, I I wouldn't say that we prevailed over Philadelphia, but we hit a good spot. And that is behind this last year, which has enabled us to refocus on really the the future potential of the property and allows us now to refocus on that. Before we were just didn't have the resources available at all and and did our best to communicate with the town, but even we didn't know the future direction of the business because of the situation itself at hand.
Are there any counselors with any discussion?
Yes, please.
Sure.
So through the chair, Jeannie, correct me if I'm wrong, this license wasn't renewed, although they applied for it. They never signed off on it because they didn't meet the criteria of the businesses. Apparently, you don't have a license.
Well, I I did check the ABCC's website, and it does say that the licenses it has been renewed and that it expires on 12/31/2024, according to the ABCC's website. My understanding is that the license was renewed but wasn't issued because it wasn't in compliance.
That's more accurate.
That's accurate, what what you just said.
And so the check that they sent in, we cashed?
No.
No, we never cashed it. We held on to it.
Yeah, we we don't.
As was we held on to the license also.
So without paying for a license, the ABCC still says that they have a license.
Yeah, because probably renewed blanket wise with the others for the ABCC.
I think the issue would be that it's renewable, but the subissue is, at least by our, this town's bylaws, that in order for it to be issued, it must, all conditions must be met, you know, compliant conditions must.
Our lives with the local licensing authority, which is you to actually issue that physical license.
Correct.
We need to have that on hand to have any deliveries.
Absolutely. So the license was renewed, but just not issued, and we can't get it issued until we provide a certificate of compliance.
Right.
We can't provide a certificate of compliance until we bring the building up to code. And
Right.
So I I believe it's been renewed and it's just just hasn't issued. So it's still a viable license that could be sold in the event that we find a buyer.
Do you have a sense, I'm sorry, through the chair, that there might be a potential customer out there for your?
I believe that there's some interest out there. I represent a lot of of restaurateurs. I believe, and I've also been in contact with a consultant or advisor who is a broker for liquor licenses throughout the Commonwealth. So we'll hopefully get some interest in it, because they they did expend money when they purchased it. So to just relinquish it or have it revoked, they're going to lose out either way. So giving them, giving the opportunity to try to recoup some of the the losses would definitely be in their interest. And I still think would benefit the town because ultimately, if someone comes to the town and says, we're looking for a liquor license, I'll give you my card. Call him, have him give me a call.
Hi. At your, at your last, at when you, at the last meeting, when you spoke on behalf of the applicant or Elmcrest, I thought you mentioned something that it was a long struggle, but you finally got the insurance money from the from the fires that took place. Why did you let the property go to pot? It's not a golf course anymore. It's a, it's a, it's a field. The grass is this high. And in fact, there was a farmer out there mowing the grass and rolling it for hay. And so to bring that golf course back to its pristine condition, which it was then, is going to take a lot of money, a lot of.
It will.
Now, you mentioned that you would like to sell the license. Now, I'm not a lawyer. And I will tell you that in my experience with the town, I mean, the town has issued X number of licenses that we provide to an applicant who is going to utilize that license on the the property that's being licensed. You're asking us to let you take this license and barter with anybody who was interested in a license, and we don't even know where that will be.
Well, they would have to come back before this council.
I realize that.
So I mean, you you would still have the ability to approve a transfer and change of location relative to the license.
I understand that. I just think that the town in good faith has renewed the license for a number of years, even though, yes, the golf course was open. I'm not sure how, what your membership was in terms of supporting the property. But the mere fact that you let the property go to seed, it just sends a message that, you know, you're not interested in a golf course at that location. And I'm concerned that how long is this license going to be in your pocket until you find a suitable person to sell it to? And learned earlier on that we don't have pocket licenses. Now, that's what I was socializing years ago. Now, maybe the the philosophy has changed, but I would be more inclined to vote, to revoke your license this evening without prejudice. And have you folks work hard on just determining what you're going to do with the property. It may not be a nine hole golf course with something else. It may be, who knows? You may want to come back for a zone change and put condos there. You may, I mean, there are lots of opportunities. I mean, it's a beautiful piece of land. But it's going to take time, and we've already sat on this for a long time. And it's not fair to other folks. If they want to buy, if they want to purchase the license through the town, then they should. Like you did when you came to the town. But we didn't charge you $50,000 for the license when you came to the town.
Well, the town didn't own it.
No.
Right? So they purchased it, they purchased it as part of the transaction.
Pretty close to that amount.
Right, right around $30,000. And and I understand you're.
When you were quite, when you took the the property through the auction, is that what you said?
Correct.
But the initial license, so I'm, you know, they come, what's what's the license fee for?
Twenty two hundred?
Twenty two.
That's the renewal fee. There's, there's no fee to the town to apply for a new license.
Right.
Renewal fees come up after.
Right. Okay, I'm just, personally, I think that you need to show us that you're really serious about doing something with the property to bring it into compliance, to sell it to someone who has the facilities, the resources to be able to bring the property up to the standard that it deserves.
And and I just want to clarify a few things. The the first comment, the pocket license, you don't know when, you know, how long we're going to hold it. My suggestion to the council was, give us until the end of this year to, until the renewal time. If at that point, we don't have an agreement to sell it, we relinquish it back to the town. So we're really looking for a three and a half, three months, when when's the renewals due?
I think November 30th. November 30th, they have to be signed by.
So if we don't have an agreement by November 30th, we're not going to renew it. We're not going to submit a renewal application for the license. So it's a finite period of time to address that concern. Your other concern relative to the the fees associated with the license, to the extent that the town had another license and an applicant came to the town and said, we want to open up a restaurant or a bar, the town can't charge more than the the annual fee. So to deprive the the current owner of the license, the ability for a three month period, three and a half month period to try to sell the license, I think is just doing a disservice to them in trying to allow them to utilize the license, because the town would be in the same position either way.
Connor?
Sure.
So what would happen if the license was revoked is the town council has the power to do that. The ABCC simply needs to be notified and that license number would be dead. But it would allow an available license for somebody to come apply for a new license, just like everybody else would.
Right. Do you have a sense, Jeannie, of any interested parties in the past saying one were to become available on all alcohol license?
No, I'm not aware. People call for the off premise, like the package store, like the store ever available.
Greater market for that.
Right.
So through the chair, sir. So I just want to clarify a few things. Obviously, the fire happened years ago. This town and the planning board has, in my opinion, bent over backwards trying to help out. We've allowed a tent to be used. We've allowed a little storage shed to be used. But the license is a restaurant license is what we consider it, because our bylaws do not allow an all alcohol on premises license without the service of food and a full menu. Well, nothing personal. There's really, the banquet facility was closed. A full menu was packaged sandwich in a refrigerator that, truthfully, I looked at, and they were still in there from last August. No one's buying those. And I mean, we allowed that. We we were hoping to work with you to that course would get back on its feet and all. And we've done this for multiple years. And at some point, we have to say, okay, we've already done our job. We've already tried to work with you. I know the situation stinks. But I think it's time to move on from this. I mean, literally, I think back in January, when I brought it up, we should have moved on from it. And I would just make a comment to the council going forwards. I don't think we should sign any licenses that don't meet all the criteria at that time. We should not be renewing and holding in abeyance. If they don't meet the criteria, Springfield does it. You know what? You lose your license, and then you can reapply once you meet the criteria. I would say going forwards, we should consider that. But I do think we've done everything. I understand their position. Of course, they'd like to sell the license and try and make some money off of it. Who wouldn't? But we've held it so long. I think it's time to move on. My thoughts. Thank you.
I also think, um, I think last month, we were ready to revoke it, but I think, Mr. Coyle, when you came in, you had mentioned that your client wasn't available, but you guys were going to come tonight. And he, I I think, I'm pretty sure I remember this correctly, that, you know, there are plans and you were going to present them to us. And I don't really think this is what we were expecting. I think we were actually expecting some type of.
Well, and and in speaking with the ownership group, the reality is, after my discussion with this council, that nothing was going to happen to get this license up and running within a short period of time. And I know that's what this council was looking for. We, I could have brought plans and we would be here and and I think, Mr. Page, you said it. We're going to be two years until you get the place up and running, even if you bring plans next, next month. So that's why I've offered a different solution to the to the issue. And I think it's one that still benefits the town in general and doesn't deprive the the town with the ability to utilize the license in the event that there's someone that wants to to purchase the license. And it hasn't been used, and I understand that there's been a long history, but it's only not been in use for eight, eight, eight months. In in the grand scheme of things, there's case law in the ABCC that says if a place is closed down for six months, you you have at least six months to be able to try to sell a license. You can't just take it after six months. We're at eight months and 13 days.
We're at over a year because last August, Elmcrest closed. I was there. They put the gates up. From what I understand, the last of the league moved out to a different golf course and and that was it. So so although you're saying it, this is the first full year it hasn't been open. And all due respect, last year wasn't much of a golf course. The people were hoping, they were hoping that the settlement came through. They were hoping that the course would be taken care of so that they could utilize it. I mean, this town loves Elmcrest. I mean, we have a huge history going way back. And like I said, I just think, I think from a town's perspective, we've done more for Elmcrest, trying to help out the best.
Anyone else have any other comments?
I just missed one question. Has there been any communication with the residents next door in terms of what's going on or any potential plans or just hey, hang in there with us, any type of back and forth with people that live in and around that property?
No, not much. No, I I certainly, I certainly hear your your sentiments. And from a resource standpoint, we're at the point now where, yes, we do have resources. And and we stand 100% behind Elmcrest. One thing we do know is golf very well. And you, the the property may look worse than it is last year, but it's just like having a beard and shaving it off. The core golf course is in good shape underneath. And we're using this time rather than running the business this season is to focus on the future potential and our opportunities and the town's opportunities with the property as well. So and and longer term, looking out, I see us coming back to the town if clearly the the end of the we clearly in the future won't have a liquor license here. And we didn't want to present plans, as Ben had mentioned, to to waste your time. Because we want to come to the town with definite, more definitive plans than just rough plans. Right now, today would have been too early for us. We're still working on it and we'll be coming to the town. But as we we look forward, we would likely come back to the town in pursuit of a liquor license in the far in the future when we're, when the town's ready and we're ready as well. So those plans are are still in our our longer term.
Right. One more comment, please. A few years ago, and Jonathan Torch is not here, but he said it was like six years ago. And he was on the planning board, that you folks went before the planning board for a waiver of site clean review for some modifications that you were going to do on the property. And at the time, the planning board in their, you know, their wisdom felt that what you were proposing really required a site plan, a full site plan. And you left with the understanding, and we understood that you would be coming back with a full site plan. And you never came back. You never came back. And that was years ago.
I don't always having a.
You don't remember what that was?
Before the fire, any plans to change the Elmcrest facilities?
I know it was focusing on the, if you're looking at the the golf, the club on the right hand side, an elevator was going to be put in, you were going to do. You're going to be do, you were going to do something to the the 19th hole.
That's, that's when we were going.
Right.
For the insurance company just closed the account. That was the the two year period that we were making progress with the insurance company. All the elevator was code upgrades. And believe it or not, that started some of the problems, like the elevator, because it took up most of the restaurant area. And the and the the insurance company was unwilling to give us the same space for the restaurant. So the restaurant got very small. Just the elevator was just very demanding. And so they wanted to keep the exact same footprint, would not budge off of that. But we also had to do all the code upgrades and we were required to do an elevator upgrade. But we just wanted to have the restaurant space for for the patrons, the same amount of space.
I understand.
And so, yes, we were, we hired engineers and we were coming to the town. We were there. And then everything stopped with them. And I don't want to get into into that that complaint, but it was, it was pretty unfair and deceptive on us, what they did to us. It really was. And I can't even, I wouldn't wish this on anybody. Unfortunately, my parents are going through it right now. They had a house fire. It is awful dealing with insurance companies. I often think that, especially on the commercial side, that they're almost designed like not to pay. I often think that especially on the commercial side, that they're almost designed like not to pay people out, like I can't, I can't even explain it. But going through the court process, and I respect what Ben does, but that was, that was not fun. It was extremely expensive for Elmcrest, extremely expensive and time consuming on all the partnerships to battle this company with seemingly unlimited resources. And we do not, do not are looking to profit off of sale of the liquor license. We're just looking for some like cost recovery that we have into it. It just helps us, it helps the whole business longer term and the golf course itself. Because all the, all those proceeds go back into the golf course.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Yes, my final comments would be I, I see the struggle that you guys have gone through and it's definitely not something that anyone would wish upon. Even I definitely want things to improve on your behalf. But at the same time, from the town's perspective, it seems like this has been an ongoing, never ending process. And I think we just have to have a conclusion sooner rather than later. And even though three months doesn't sound like a long period of time, we've already kicked the can down the road so far with so many different accommodations. So I wouldn't be in favor of continuing the license beyond tonight. That said, is there any further comments? I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make the motion, please. I move to revoke Elmcrest Country Club's all alcohol on premises liquor license without prejudice due to their non-compliance with town departments.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Do a roll call vote for this one.
Aye.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
I'm a guess. Marilyn?
Yes.
And Ralph?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you read this?
Our next item on the agenda is approval of a one day entertainment license for the Islam Meadow Cultural Council for the Arts and Brew Festival. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak.
I'm having a really hard time hearing you. So can you repeat it?
Sure. It's just about the Arts and Brew Festival. So if you want to come forward to the.
Yeah. Don't make comments.
Well, sure. If you could also just state your name and address.
Thank you. So we are having our third annual Arts and Brew Festival. The first year we had it at Brew Practitioners. It was great. A little windy, but we really had a successful day. Our second year, it was a deluge. I don't know if you remember that rainstorm, but I think there was a space about this big that didn't get wet. So we had to cancel that day. And then there's no rain date. So, we, we exist on a grant. So everything that we paid for, we lost that. We are having our third show, the August 24th. And so far, everything's in place. We have musicians. We have food trucks. We have artists, authors. 12 to 5. Got a grant from the town. Very generous grant. Thank you. So I don't know what else you need to know from me. Everything's falling into place really nicely as long as the weather cooperates. We're good.
State your name and address for the record. State your name and address for the record.
My name is Jane Riley, 357 Pinehurst Drive, East Lang Meadow.
Thank you.
Okay, that's good. Jane, do you know if the Norcross House might be having a tag sale on the same day? Or if there's any other activity going on that you could sort of, send people to, you know, them and they send people to you?
Yeah, that happened the first year. So that was good. We got Norcross people and we sent people to Norcross, but that was in June. So I don't know of another event that day in Slank Meadow.
There may be something across the street at the depot. They seem to have a lot of activity and that's in the same area. So that would be wonderful to just have people spend the whole day there, go to different things.
That would be great. Yeah.
Great. There's no further discussion. I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, I'm done.
I will make the, I make a motion to approve a one day entertainment license for the East Long Meadow Cultural Council for the Arts Brew Festival, 45 Baldwin Street, August 24th, 2024, from 12 to 5 p.m.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Then our next item is approval of a one day liquor license for St. Paul the Apostles Church. Is there a motion?
I move to approve a one day liquor license for St. Paul the Apostles Church, 235 Dwight Road for a wedding reception on August 17, 2024, from 6 p.m. to 11 p.m.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Our next item under licensing matters is update on the. Is that something you would like to, as the license?
I can with the update, certainly. It is a common practice of the ABCC to make routine compliance checks with all licenses throughout the Commonwealth. And back in mid-March of this year, a compliance check was initiated at the Tutor House. And unfortunately, the check yielded a failure on the part of the attendant at the cash register to check the ID of the purchaser who was not 21 years of age. So that yielded a violation and the violation yields a hearing. The hearing was held in mid-June, Jeanne?
Early June, yeah.
And just recently, the ABCC rendered its decision. And the decision was to simp, I shouldn't say simply because it still is a violation, but simply in the sense of the severity of the consequence. And they rendered a letter of warning to the licensee to, you know, be much more vigilant. The owner of the Tutor House appeared at, on, online. All of the hearings are done remote. And expressed his, you know, concern that they had made, committed a violation and has given his word that his employees would be much more vigilant. And in truth, to, to date, he has never suffered a violation in all the years that he's owned the license, which is why I suspect perhaps just the warning was issued, a written warning was issued. We've had other circumstances in town with other licensees in past years where there were violations and they, the particular establishments had somewhat of a history with violations. So the ABCC is not merciful when you start to develop a track record and has the authority to render a variety of consequences. And so in this particular situation, the status is that the Tutor House received a warning and we move on.
Thank you for the update. You're welcome. So we have no financial matters this night. So approval of minutes. I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the July 9, 2024, open session minutes.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So old business, we have our first item, approval of the town manager goals. Marilyn, Jim, and John Torsch were on the subcommittee to approve the goals. It's the chair committee. So I'll ask her to write the overview for us.
Thank you, Connor.
Okay, the town council town manager evaluation subcommittee met on August 7 to review the 19 goals that were submitted by our colleagues on the council. We went through each goal and actually it triggered some very interesting conversation. And I found it to be a really, really good meeting. It was difficult because every goal has its value. However, we recommended four for our town manager to tackle over the next year. And I will tell you that the first three had multiple suggestions from other counselors. So in some way, we've all sort of been on the same page, which is nice. So I will read you the goals that we chose to ask Tom, Tom Fischenson as our town manager to tackle for the next year. The first one is building space usage and needs assessment plan. The town has made great progress on the space needs at Town Hall with the acquisition of 382 North Main Street. A plan should be developed that addresses the shift in usage of office space between the two Town Hall buildings, potential future uses of the existing Town Hall at Center Square, all town buildings and departments and their needs, including but not limited to police and fire departments, priority and general timing, for example, short term, three to five years, five to 10 years, 10 to 20 years of recommended actions. Order of magnitude costs, for example, 100,000, 1,000,000, 10,000,000. And potential, I, I'm sorry, I had to read that. And potential funding sources. The plan should consider regular repairs, maintenance, renovation, addition, replacement, consolidation and location. We suggest that a committee be formed with the appropriate skill sets and not be comprised of a majority of town employees. Second goal, road improvement plan. The council recognizes how expensive it is to properly maintain our roads. However, the condition of well-traveled roads in town have deteriorated in recent years. Conduct a needs assessment of town roads and create a five-year plan for its implementation that addresses repaving of roads, updating the sidewalk plan and completing more connections for pedestrian safety, considering upgrades or redesigns of busy intersections, updating and simplifying language throughout town, oh, I'm sorry, signage throughout town, priority, general timing of recommended actions and order of magnitude costs and potential funding sources. The third goal, capital stabilization fund. This idea came about during this town's, during this past year's budget process. We recommend that a capital stabilization fund be established along with recommendations for its funding for the next five years. If leftover or smaller amounts can be set aside in a dedicated capital stabilization fund over the course of a few years, it may help the town accomplish some of the larger ticket products, projects, excuse me, that come from the recommendations out of Goals One and Two, among others. And the last goal is number four, car break-ins and theft strategy. Crime is a popular topic among residents, especially on social media. The council recognizes the hard work that our police department does to protect our residents. How can we address car break-ins, theft and other petty crimes, either through additional resources or technology? So that be it. Thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn. I would just add that it was definitely difficult to narrow it down to four goals because there were a lot of great ideas that we all had submitted. But there was definitely a lot of consensus among the top three or so direction of town over the next year that we'd like to see. We also included four goals because we figured the first three were things that Tom would especially directly be responsible for. Whereas the fourth, while he would be responsible for, would probably most likely have a lot more of a public safety and like police chief involvement. So may not be as time consuming on his part as the, the first three.
Because we work on time management.
Of course. They were trying to be considered. Is there any questions on the, the goals from any counseling?
Good. You have a question?
The top three were probably on my list, too. And I'm interested about the fourth one. So, yeah, no, I'm, it's all doable.
Great. If there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion to approve the goals.
I make a motion to approve the town manager's goals as presented.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. Some favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Second is the opposed amendment to traffic rules and regulations adding no parking on both sides of Melwood Avenue from Maple Street to Savoy Avenue from 6 a.m. to 8 a.m. and 1 p.m. to 3 p.m. So I suppose, Tom, would you provide some context on how this came about for the town?
Surely. So the site plan approval decision for the new high school, as with most decisions written by the planning board or voted on by the planning board, has conditions of approval. And I'll read condition E, voted on by the planning board. No parking signs shall be placed on Susan Street, Norton Street and both sides of Melwood Avenue. Of course, administratively, there are some boxes to check before that can happen. The traffic rules and regulations would have to be voted on and changed to create no parking areas. And then obviously putting signs in is a whole other ballack. But so basically, regardless of whose decision it is to make a no parking area, it's sort of triggered us to have this discussion about creating a no parking area in our traffic rules and regs for Melwood. Susan Street and Norton already are no parking, no on-street parking anytime. Melwood is not. So we would be creating that area and of course, the hours and or how far up and down Melwood we want to go is your prerogative. So we just wanted to have the conversation. When we had the conversation last time, the council agreed that it was probably a good idea to get the input from the abutters. And it sounds like that message was received. So we didn't waste any postage, which is good. So I think just sort of kind of getting the input of, let's face it, those would, that would be affected by this the most to see what, if any hours we should put on this, or if we shouldn't do this, or we should. There's obviously pros and cons to all, but it's easy for me to say, I don't live there. I don't park there. So I think, again, with most of our initiatives these days, I think it's a good idea to get as much public input as we can before we make a decision. So that's for a wrap.
Great. Thank you, Tom, for the overview. So at this time, I'll ask if there's anyone in the audience that would like to provide comments on it, whether you're for or against, or questions, if you would come forward to the microphone at the table and state your name and address for the record.
Fun to us. All right. Cassandra Sherso, 15 Melwood Ave. I think we need it. I've lived there for, well, I lived on Melwood almost my entire life. But now I live at this end of the street and I've lived there for seven years. And it is a problem. It's always been a problem during the start of school and the end of school where people park on both sides of the street. And I don't know if you've driven down Melwood, but at our end of the street, it's a little bit more narrow than the other end. So when there's a car parked on both sides, it's difficult for one car to get down, just a normal passenger vehicle. And then you take into account the kids crossing the street to get to their parents' cars parked on our street. And oftentimes they're either walking through our lawns, which they don't have a problem with, or they're walking in the middle of the street. Then you have the high school students speeding down the street, us trying to get to our homes or to leave our homes. And heaven forbid, there's an emergency vehicle that needs to get through because we do have a lot of elderly people that live on our street. And it's pretty frequent that we have ambulances or other emergency vehicles come down. There's no space. And I'm very much for the. And I'm very much for the hours. That's fine, because as one of my neighbors, I believe email you, she's not here. Like, if you have people over, there shouldn't be no parking all the time. But also, the problem comes down to enforcement, because technically on our street, there are two no parking signs at the very beginning, like right at the mouth, and people still park right there on the edge of the street, which is very dangerous when there's all that commotion. So I want the sign, like, we want the signs, but we want enforcement of the signs. That's it.
One second, one second. Cassie, the people that are parked, they're not part of car line, they're just parked and the kids.
So instead of going into the horseshoe for picking up their kids because there's traffic, they park on our street.
Okay, so but they're, now this is, what's that, what defines parking? Are they in their cars? Are their engines still running?
They're idling, like, they're either idling or they're actually in park, car off.
Yeah.
And then they'll like turn into our driveways to turn around. They'll sit there, they'll start lining up around like, what, one fifteen, like one oh five, one fifteen, and then school gets out at one forty-five. They're still there till two, two fifteen, waiting for their kids to come out.
Okay. So if it were, we could say no standing. I mean, that would.
Well, this is, this is all part of the conversation, right? We can say whatever we want. It just needs to be.
But I just want to make sure that what we do is effective, and that people say, I'm not parking.
I'm not parking, my car's running and, right. And I think, hopefully, the 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 distance from the street of the new high school and the new traffic pattern is going to sort of curtail some of this anyway. But again, the the conversation needs to be had.
I think yes and, yes and no, because it's a direct lineup, which we were not aware of until the plans came out, that the driveway was going to line up directly with our street. But then also, now that there's a construction happening, like right now, with the school year, we just think it's going to be worse like this year while the horseshoe is closed and stuff, and the amount of times that I've seen somebody like go into the driveway that's right next to the high school's driveway, you know what I'm talking about? The house that's like back and right there. I don't like exit my street, you know, twenty-four, seven, but the few times that I do, every time I've seen someone accidentally turn down that person's driveway and reverse back into me. So I just, I think it's gonna get worse before it potentially gets better.
Yeah, certainly during construction. I'll I'll agree with that. I mean, nobody's gonna want to go anywhere near the site.
Exactly.
So I'm sure that it's only gonna get worse now. I I was, I guess I was talking about, you know, when when the school's done. That's a considerable distance back from the road now than it is, you know what I'm saying?
The problem of it lining up with our street, I guess, is also like, then it will directly line up with the street. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I guess, yeah, I guess, not necessarily a parking thing, but yeah, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, that could potentially create more just normal traffic.
Oh, oh, well, I, and I don't know that there was there, that was mentioned through the traffic report or whatever. I I don't, I don't know. There's still going to be the same amount of students and cars, so I don't, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
And again, I thought they tried to get most of those cars to get away from that driveway on e- on exit. Now they're they're down more towards the church.
You would.
Well, I think that's the way it was designed, and I think that's what the traffic report bore out, but I mean, we could obviously look into that more, but yeah.
If you want to come.
Sorry, I'm sorry, yeah.
So I have to go later?
Yes, please.
Tim Garska, live at twenty-one Melwood. So does the new, does the new entrance and exit to the high school feed right into Melwood? Does it line up?
It does line up.
Not right now, but it, I'm sorry, but, you know, when all is said and done, it will.
So with the layout, and again, it's, again, it's probably my fault for not paying more attention to it. Is that, was that the plan all along? When they, when they rolled this plan out for the high school?
Yeah, I mean, that that was the, that was the site plan that was approved.
Okay. And as far as the traffic, like, like, who did the traffic pattern? Was it somebody that was local, or was that the state?
One of the design engineers. I don't have anybody. It would have been a subset of of Jones Wits at Architects. Or SM, SMMA, I would assume, the site, the site design, Time Bond, they subcontracted Time Bond to do it. So it was a local consulting engineer.
But do we know that for sure, that it was actually somebody that did the site and looked at the site and saw the school at entrance and exit?
Yeah, it's, it was a requirement of the the site plan approval.
Okay, and that's written somewhere in there?
Yep, somewhere.
Okay. That doesn't make me feel good.
If I can interject.
Like this, I'd like to just see it, because to me, you know, living on that street for a year now, trying to pull out in the morning, it's, it's tough, even when school's not there. If you go to take a left-hand turn out of the street at the high school, and someone's gonna get creamed. I mean, and I I just see with the traffic with a direct feed going down Melwood, I would say it if I did or didn't live on the street. I really think that there's going to be a problem for the town if it just doesn't look at making an adjustment. As you were saying, I couldn't quite understand what you were saying, but if we dump the cars down more towards Saint Mikes, where it's not the crest of the hill in that, in that turn, I I just think that be, that that's going to be a real problem.
Yeah, so.
Just say if it's not too late for an adjustment for a traffic pattern or no right-hand turn, no left-hand turn, something, I would just say to the council, with all due respect, you know, it it's going to be a problem.
Yeah, so I think all this came up during the the site plan approval process. We can certainly look at the numbers, but I don't know that the proposed condition showed many straight across coming out of the the horseshoe now that it lines up. Because most of the vehicles that are now coming out that way to sneak up Marshall or Melwood are the the students trying to get out of the parking lot quick.
Yeah.
They they can't go that way now. They have to go to the church. You know what I mean?
But that's the exit.
That's the exit now.
Oh, okay. So even though it lines up, the exit's all the way down. Okay. Okay. Good. Okay, no, that was my, that was my only question.
Can you speak on the committee about signals there? Were we, are we putting in signals?
So, no.
We're not.
We don't have the traffic count that weren't, weren't a traffic light there.
Will there be a beacon? All right, I don't remember.
Now there are two crosswalks on either side of that main entrance now with the beacon. And it's further down from the top of the hill, which I think everybody mentioned, so that there's more time to for people flying over that hill on Maple, which they do, to to see the intersection and the crosswalks. Whereas people coming out of that horseshoe now, I mean, you're at the top of the hill. It's pretty unsafe. So, yeah, that's all been taken into account. There'll be the flashing beacons at both crosswalks. And again, I I feel like they concentrated most of the tra, the exiting traffic down towards the the exit near the church.
Okay. There be crossing guards?
That I don't know.
Sometimes we could ask the, the police department assigns crossing guards.
Historically, I haven't had them at the high school due to the age of the students, but
Students.
I mean, that's certainly can be talked about, for sure.
However, the the school building committee has spoken in length about the importance, especially in two weeks when school opens up, because it's, it's a, you know, an interim plan, and everybody's kind of upended to make sure that there is consistent police staffing there morning and, you know, afternoon in in that critical hour. I would have thought twenty minutes, but I I believe you when you say some folks line up forty-five to fifty minutes. That, that, I'm envious. To pick up a fifteen-year-old. It's not Meadowbrook. However, and of course, when the new school is ready and it opens, we will still make sure that there is adequate police here, because it's all, the enforcement piece is the key. And the committee made the, made the statements, or, or at least I did. Then enforce it. If if you get repeat offenders in the first week, give out tickets. That's the only way you're going to make a statement, because this is a, it's going to be a busy intersection there for the next three years until, you know, you're back to a new normal and people learn what the parking regs need to be. We'll make sure through the committee, the building committee, that we emphasize the importance of police presence.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think that's an excellent point, because this traffic pattern is going to change every year.
And it could conceivably change.
It's gonna change.
Change again, you know, as you get into stages of construction, they may have to make a temporary readjustment. It's, it's the nature of a large project. There's no avoiding it.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would?
Hi, Carol Kelly, seventeen Melwood. I just want to agree with what neighbors have offered here. And the no parking signs are long, long, long overdue. And but Kathleen, what you said with the enforcement of them, that's, that is the key. And I think right now with the construction going on and the children going back to school, what, in two or three weeks?
Weeks.
We have to put this into place now. We have to do something now, because it's very dangerous when you're going down the street, particularly in the afternoon, when the parents are lined up there waiting. They they line up all the way to the corner. The other day I was down there and there's a worker truck down there, and it was just like, I hope nobody's coming because I can't see. And you just, and that happens with the parents there, or they're on both sides all the way to the corner. We need the signs, but we need the enforcement for it also. So.
Thank you.
And I don't, I don't know why this is so hard to do, just signs.
Is there anyone else that would like to?
Robert McPrill, one eighty-one Maple Street, at the property across the street from the entrance of the high school. And we've been there for twenty-five years, and I'm supporting the no parking signs on Melwood. School pickup time is the worst part of the day. Parents are parking all over the street. They block the mailbox, trash pails. There's been situations where they park over the driveway. We can't get groceries in and out of the the car. They park in our driveway. We have to ask them to move high schools to stent, to send on the property. They walk over the lawn to get to their rides. I'm not the crazy old lawn guy, but I I've asked them to politely not walk over the grass, and I've gotten sporne at, I have gotten called names. And I've been asked, well, what do you expect if you're living across from the high school? I've had kids playing football on my lawn. A a mom came to the door and wanted to start a fight because we asked her daughter not to be on our lawn. It's private property, and they have no right to be there. They leave trash behind. They collect water bottles and wrappers, and that they don't want to take home with. The parents are waiting. They see all this happening, and they don't do a thing. We, we served on the scholarship committee. We, we've been a small business in town for twenty-five years. We try to generate funds for the kids, even the obnoxious ones. Our daughter's graduated from the town, and they're both well, and we want to give back a gift. But I also expect the high school to inform the students and their parents to respect homeowner property, walk on the sidewalk, and please stay out of my parking lot. I, you know, I hope that you take the statement to heart, protect the area or property, encourage respecting good civic behavior from the students and their parents, especially to newly seeder, senior citizens. And it just seems like courtesy has been forgotten, and maybe it has not even been taught at all. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience?
We all agree.
All right. Is there any council comments?
Oh, you can go first.
So my curiosity, after reading the traffic rules and regs, are we looking at doing this for the entire year? Are we looking at doing only during the school year? I mean, what are the thought processes and I mean, I drive up and down that street, and I would be more apt to take the hours off and say no parking from here to here.
Period.
Period.
I agree.
No, can't do that because of the residents that live there. What if you have a friend coming over?
That's actually allowed in here. There's exceptions to it. If you're having a service at the house, you know, like a landscaper is allowed to park there if you're having a delivery.
About a relative.
That's permissible.
Okay.
So what, what would you need?
Doesn't specifically say that.
But if you had a visitor there, and they couldn't fit into the driveway.
She couldn't make it tonight, but I, she said she was gonna email you that she wanted the hours. She would be opposed to the full day, because like if she had people over, her driveway is small, if she had people over and they parked in the street, she didn't want them then getting a ticket.
So I don't, I don't want to derail the conversation, but this is sort of why we're thinking about the parameters, and I think Jeannie said it almost after the first time I brought it up was, is it when school's in session, right? Like, on a Saturday or Sunday, we don't need to tell people they don't have to park there, because their only reason they're parking there is to pick the kids up from school. So that was a, that was why I had the hours on there in the first place, just to sort of generate the conversation. And then I'm not there all the time. So the discussion is, what are the parameters that they, that the, that the residents see out in the field on a day-to-day basis? And my guess is it's Monday through Friday, seven to nine, or whatever, and one to three, or twelve to two, or whatever, whatever it is. That was, that was the original thought, and that was so that they didn't lose their sort of on-street parking for guests. I mean, that, that's no fun if we just say, you can't park from here to here at any time. How do we make it if we're going to enforce it? Then everybody's getting tickets, and they're gonna be sorry they showed up today, which I don't want to see.
Can we make the signage say something along the lines of no parking for school pick, drop-off and pickup?
Yeah, I mean, we made the no left turn during, or when car line is at Meadowbrook. I mean, we can make any sign we want. But yeah, I I don't know how wordy.
Just between the hours of seven AM to nine AM and one PM to three PM.
Monday to Friday, seven to nine, one to three.
Sure, yes. Um, I can't help but think about Parker Street for pickup at Meadowbrook, Summers Road for pickup at Mountain View, and is it Elmcrest? At Burson, for Burson? Yep. I feel for you guys. I completely understand, because driving down Parker Street, turning out of Meadowbrook is a complete nightmare. Where are these people supposed to go? And if we do this on Melwood, are we gonna have an issue on Parker Street, Summers Road, and Elmcrest?
I think some of the difference was like cars can kind of be held on Parker Street.
Well, and that's what I was just thinking, like, maybe it's not as bad because it's on one side of the road. Maybe not both.
Correct, so.
These are people literally parked.
They park there all day long?
No, they park there for forty-five minutes.
Because of car line.
But it's not a car line.
But it's not a car line.
They don't have a car line at the high.
We're a side street, we're not a main street.
Park on our street.
Where's car line?
On Maple.
It's in the loop of the circle or in the parking lot.
But then where, so then it would go in the loop of the circle down Maple?
No, they, they park on our street.
No, I completely understand. I completely understand that, but when, when there's more cars than fit in the horseshoe, where does?
Stop on Maple. So people are just coming onto our street and parking. We have nothing to do with cars.
Okay, so this is not, so there's car line on Maple, and there's
Yes.
pickup on Melwood.
There is no car line.
Technically, there's no.
There is no car line.
But if people can't get into the horseshoe, they back up on Maple.
The buses go in the loop.
Yeah.
There are no vehicles allowed in the loop.
But they still go.
But people need to be picked up, right?
No, they do it in the parking lot.
Okay.
Need to get a little control and ask them to come up and sit because of the microphone and all, instead of just calling from the back of the audience.
Sure.
Sorry.
So there's no car line. There's the loop that only buses are supposed to go in, but normal cars still go in.
Okay.
And when that backs up, they back up on that side of Maple, like the school side of Maple, they back up. Normally, they're supposed to get picked up through. Normally, they're supposed to get picked up through the church, the the lu- the the entrance on the part of the the church side there.
Parking lot.
Yes. Not everyone does that. People park on our street to avoid the traffic in both those areas.
So they're.
Not having to try to turn the left on Maple Street at two o'clock.
Trying to get out.
At that um uh Westwood or wherever.
Yeah, they either just head down Westwood to avoid it altogether, or they just go back out Maple.
So there is a car line, but it's.
If you want to call it that.
If you want to call it that, it and it's supposed to be through the parking lot.
The parking lot, not through the horseshoe at all, but people, there's, there's times on the horseshoe that say no cars. People ignore that. There's supposed to be like no cars from, I think it's like six forty-five to like seven thirty. And then the afternoon as well, but people are in there with the buses and then that line backs up on Maple. So another enforcement.
Except that enforcement, to me, would go to school administration.
Yeah.
Then there need to be school employees out there enforcing a a parent coming in behind or getting stuck. And I've seen it lodged be- not lodged, but between two buses where the buses should be able to line up end to end.
Yes.
And not have a car snaking through there.
And again, it's not just an inconvenience for the residents that live there. It's dangerous. You know, uh uh our neighbor Tim even said it's dangerous for him. It's, it needs to be addressed. And again, it's long overdue, this parking there on both sides of the street. Yes.
No, no, I thought it was coming up, sorry.
Well, go ahead. Okay, um, are we creating a problem for a a street down one or up one Melwood? I mean, I don't know what's what's, I don't know what's next, uh what goes beyond Melwood. I mean, would people start parking on that street?
So like where Savoy comes back around, are they just gonna go park on that?
I mean, I don't know. I I can't.
Yeah, no, I I feel like the proximity is why people park. It's right across from the high school.
Okay.
And the high school is not as far back as it's going to be.
But if they have no place to park.
But there will, yeah, but there's, the whole parking lot's open. Again, it's a enforcement thing if.
Or maybe education too, telling people that's where they need to go.
So Greg Thompson, school committee chair, also member of the school building committee. So we will have a dedicated school li- or uh school pickup for students and a dedicated bus line. There'll be two separate loops, which we don't currently have. Currently, what happens is the buses line up, cars come in behind and then they're stuck. So they go over on Melwood because they don't have to be stuck behind the buses. The cars also come in in the parking lot, as you were saying, and try to sneak out Melwood. That's all gonna go away with the new school. As Tom alluded to, the students will have to come out and be forced to go out the.
Toward the Rotary.
The east side, yeah.
Okay.
The the staff parking will be in front of the building, but to the same point that Tom made, the new school will be basically where the soccer field is behind the school. So the walking distance is not as conducive as it is now. It's twice as far. And we believe the car line will move rapidly because there's room not only to pull to the side, but to go to the left of cars that are parked. So no one's gonna get stuck in there and there's plenty of room. It's much bigger than it exists now and it's separate from the buses. So the buses have their own dedicated loop that only buses are allowed to go in and the and the pickup line will be exclusively cars. I I don't dismiss the no parking signs. I think that's a, it's a valid point. It's a good idea. Uh, but I think it will be a little bit alleviated with the new design. We're much better designed for traffic and flow. You know, we spend a lot of time and effort on it. So it will be better, but you know, certainly it it still makes sense in in my perspective. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any other council comments?
So I just wanted to interject a little bit. I I was talking about, you know, having it all day. Um, after having read further and all and listening, it sounds like setting hours to it makes more sense. And then posting signs, um saying, hey, these are the hours. And if we catch someone parking there, we're gonna have to have our police department issuing tickets. I I know in Hamden, once you get a ticket or two, you realize, hey, the police are here and you don't do it again.
Has to happen.
From a resident perspective, is there any wisdom in just no parking signs at the very beginning of the street to alleviate the the turning concern and then further back the hours to alleviate the uh, you know, if you have people over, things going on at your house, a combination of it or just?
I think we should have the hours.
Just the hours.
Because right now there uh there is no parking, but it's like literally just in the mouth of our street and it still is.
Okay. Some have to go all the way down the street. They don't park all the way down the street. I think just up to Savoy would be fine. How far is that?
I think that was the proposal was Maple to Savoy.
There's no further comments. I'll entertain a motion then.
I would uh would make a motion that we um change the traffic rules and regulations, section five dash six, parking locations and prohibitions by adding. Now let me slide down. Yeah, I know. By adding Melwood Ave under the name of street, under time, uh six AM to eight AM and one PM to three PM. Under side, it will say both and under location, it would say from Maple Street to Savoy Avenue.
I'm sorry, do we want to add idling to that? Or is it, do we have to?
Do we have a definition of parking?
That's understood when you're in a car. No parking's no park.
Well, I know that. I'd see, but that that's when you get.
Under appendix. So just for clarification, under traffic rules and regulations, uh appendix five, which is where we're at. Uh, it includes stopping, standing, and parking.
Perfect, perfect. That's what I wanted to hear.
Yeah. Do you know you're done?
I am done.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Is it hanging now?
Oh, Tom, so just school days? I mean, I don't know how we make that point or you just.
Nope, it was not listed uh that way. It's just, it it's straight that there's no parking from Melwood to Savoy from six AM to eight AM and one to three PM.
I think that's okay for the regular, for the paperwork, but can we still have the signage say M through F?
Signage say whatever.
Right.
Yeah, so you.
We've created the document.
Right, the area is now no parking.
Correct.
And ever sign the.
Delineates that.
Yeah.
That's, yeah.
All right, motion been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
You opposed? Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Motion carries.
We'd like to deputize you all for the first week of school.
Stand out there.
It's nice to have people here. You know, we have our meeting so many times with empty, empty seats. So don't, just come. Just come.
No, we never know what your, what your agenda is. And the and the, maybe if you you know, I don't want you to.
You want, you want to give me, you want a letter for me every week?
Posted. It's posted on the Friday before.
Yeah, but we don't remember to look it off. Like, oh, let's see, they might.
Thank you all for your feedback on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
When do you think we'll get that?
Hey, 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 hey.
That that's a practical question. Two weeks in the, we back.
Right.
A poster board.
Yeah, well, I think uh we try to get the message out and uh there's no, nothing, we don't need a sign to um enforce traffic rules and regulations.
But I guess uh from a practical.
We'll get a lot of pe- of appeals when it's not posted.
Be a cop with the blue lights.
Yeah.
Yes, well, they, we talked about that.
Well.
But I mean, as far as the signs actually being the hole dug and put them in a few weeks.
Oh, anyway, yeah.
It was really vague. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Absolutely.
Anyway. Yeah, um, I guess if we run into, um, you know, you 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 gotta, you gotta notify DigSafe. I mean, there there there's a, because you can't just go start banging things in the ground. So um yeah, I mean, I I'll mention it to Daryl and Bruce tomorrow and we'll see what we can do on the schedule. I guess in the interim, if we get to school, we can we can do the the Fourth of July no parking signs just to just so there's something out there. It's a low-cost option. And I know they don't work and they fall down and the rain's on time and everyone's mad, but again, we can only work as fast as we can work. Um, so to put whatever that's going to be, six, eight signs in, three on, three or four on each side of the street. And then they're gonna be fighting over who gets it in their yard. But I I'll talk to Daryl and Bruce tomorrow and we'll get a realistic schedule. I I'm not gonna say we'll have them.
No, I understand.
But um, yeah, we'll see what we can do. At least get the, get them located and the DigSafe's called in and then if we have the material, then we can get them in when we can get them in.
Good.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next item under new business is approving the uh waiver provisions of section five dash four of the charter to uh Jean Sintolo to the Board of Library Trustees. Is there a motion?
I mostly approve the waiving of provisions of section five dash four of the Charter to Appoint Jean Sintolo to the Board of Library Trustees.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Saying none. Can I make a small comment? Is it, is this something that we want to, I mean, you you have this right by charter? Is this something that we want to keep doing every time I make an appointment on any one of those boards that listed to have you waive? Or do you want to, I'll just mention that they're there because you don't have to do anything. If the forty-five days elapses, then they're on, right? So it, I I can appoint, you can disappoint, right? You can veto. It doesn't say that I can't appoint. So we were having this conversation internally, uh, me and Deb, because it doesn't prevent the appointment. You just afforded forty-five days to disallow that appointment.
Correct.
So we were holding on to paperwork and these people have missed a meeting or something in the interim. When when you actually interpret the charter, the appointment can be made and they can go to that meeting. But you have the forty-five days to 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 veto. And so if you want to keep doing this, I'm all for it. You know, I'm not trying to hide anything, certainly not an appointment to a board. Um, I just wanted to talk it out because I think this has been the procedure and I just kept it going.
Yeah, it's a good question. I I suppose I would interpret it the same way that they could serve until such time that the council decided that they can't serve as long as it's within that forty-five day period. But I suppose it doesn't say that they can't serve until we approve it.
But I thought the forty-five days is what we had to make the decision.
I do, but it doesn't stop the appo- like you.
I guess, I guess the problem where the, what I would try to avoid, if there was um a candidate who for some reason had um an issue that we felt was not appropriate, you know, rather than appoint and then make it public and then take this person off.
Yep.
It would be much better to deal with it beforehand.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, that's how, that's how I thought it was.
There's only five of, I mean, it it's really no big deal. It's, I I'm making this a five-minute item now. It's usually thirty seconds. So I mean, it's not a big deal. And and if that's the way you want to do it, I just, there's all these things that I sort of inherited a process. And we're just asking the question because we're holding on to this document and Deb knows if I have something on my desk for longer than two weeks, there's a good chance it's not gonna, it's not gonna come back to her. So if if the appointment paperwork could get signed immediately, what difference does that make in the process? But we'll just, we'll hold on, we'll hold off on an appointment. It doesn't really matter because I don't want to, I don't want that decision to, or that situation to arise that I've appointed someone that you're, that you're all so tense.
I'm not, I, that's gonna happen.
No, no.
But I think that was the.
No, but that's the reason it's in the charter. So if my interpretation of it is taking some of your comfort away from that, then forget it. We'll just do it like this. It was just, it came up, we were chatting about it in the office and I wanted to have the conversation with you. No big deal.
So through the chair, so Tom, when someone comes up um for appointment or you've decided on someone. So anyway, you can send us immediately an email because I would think if a name pops up that any one of us was really concerned about, we could send a quick note back that say, I might have some concern on this one. And at that point, then you wait for the process.
Okay.
I mean, that would be my thought. And again, I only see this happening maybe once in every thirty years.
So.
But considering where the government and the change and why it changed, I I could see, I could see it happening back seven or eight years ago, so.
So and 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 I guess I sort of brought it up to prompt the probably more crucial part of this conversation, and that's for the four department heads that are listed in there as well. Probably may increase. And that's, somebody's already signed a contract and we're we're engaged with an employer or employment. And you can say, we don't want this person to be the police chief or the fire chief or the DPD director. And at that point, we're down the road and and I hope this doesn't come out wrong, but I, you know, sometimes I don't want to be at a situation where I'm asking your permission to hire someone. Because that's also expressly not how the charter reads. And so there's a little contradiction there. And that's why I kind of wanted to have the conversation about if this is how it's going to be interpreted here, then we kind of have to interpret it over here that way too.
Does anyone have any other comments? Yeah, I mean, I see it as you should still be able to appoint whomever you wish and send us a note that you know, hey, I'm making such and such appointment. And then that kind of starts the clock for us if we feel that's inappropriate. And then we could take it up at our next meeting to veto.
You'd have to be careful not to deliberate that.
Right. Oh, right.
Open meeting.
Just the notification that.
Yeah.
It was taking place.
Well, and and if there's any changes to the new schedule, a lot of these things will probably work out anyway, right? Like, there won't be this you know, potentially five or six weeks between meetings.
Right, right.
Where the dates fall. So um, all right, fair. That that's more than fair. And this is sort of on par with our previous comments about more communication and notification and all that, so.
All right, so we had the motion made and seconded.
A while ago.
Any other discussion? Saying none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
You opposed? Then the next item was the appointment of a town council representative to the UHS pool committee. And that was because that subcommittee had a council representative on it who was previously Matt Voucher, who is no longer on the council that represent the council. Um, so I had asked if there was anyone as a counselor that was interested. John did mention that he was interested, but I wanted to wait in case there was anyone else that was interested before recommending someone. All right, if there's no other recommendations, then John it is.
Yes, that'll teach him not to.
Probably, probably how Matt got on there too.
And our next item was the town council calendar. So this was something that sort of floated around, it seems, for a while since the council's inception. And so I had put together a more formal calendar of all the different activities that we tend to undertake throughout the year. Also layering in the different requirements that the charter and our bylaws and any other rules and regulations require us to do. For example, like we have to review the charter every ten years. We have to review the bylaw every ten years, but ending in a five. It's like that. So we don't lose sight of it. Because if I'm reading the bylaws every day, you would have no idea that we're supposed to be doing some of these things. And then also like the first meeting of the month that we based on our rules is supposed to be the second Tuesday unless it can like a holiday or election, all that sort of stuff. So I put that all together for all of us to reference. And then I also layered in tentatively, but of course we can certainly, depending on the workload, a second meeting to return to having the second and fourth Tuesdays for our council meetings at six PM here. I think you'll notice that like November and December, it aligns like very close to the holidays. Those may not happen. That was just a placeholder for discussion purposes. But the remainder of the months from September through June would likely have the second meeting and then we would have just one for our summer schedule like we used to in the past. So that was mostly just an overview on the schedule that I put together, but if there's any. So that was mostly just an overview on the schedule that I put together, but if there's any questions.
Yeah, that's excellent, Joe. Excellent.
Thank you.
So the two meetings, um if we return to that, is that gonna be basically as needed as items come up? Or is it gonna be just a standing second meeting?
I think it'll be standing unless we find that there really aren't enough items to warrant it, like, we won't send up scheduling a second one if it's just to approve minutes and talk about a town manager report, but otherwise, I think, no offense, Tom, but.
What does that mean? You also want a town manager report every two weeks?
That's basically what we're looking at then.
Yeah, I think there's enough that, I mean, if our previous evaluation as a council was working on communication from last year, I don't think it hurts to update on what happened over the last two weeks.
I'll make Rebecca ready.
You have the first one.
Oh, sure.
So at the end of each meeting on the first Tuesday, could you decide then if you're having the second meeting? Or would you want to wait?
I think we would probably have a decent idea.
Really have your action items for the next meeting and.
Yeah, if we found that there were no action items, then we probably would have a good clue that we didn't need it unless you know, something came up out of the ordinary.
And it all depends. Special meeting. You can have special meetings.
It's really, you're the gatekeeper, actually. You have a sense of what's uh on the back burner.
And I also envisioned as we get into budget season and some other matters, so especially with all the bylaw review over the next year, that we may need that second meeting more as a workshop instead of regular business that's coming before us.
Right. We will have quite a few bylaws, not just the twenty twenty-five bylaw review, but, you know, if there's a center town district bylaw, I mean, that's gonna eat up a lot of time. Accessory dwelling units. I mean, these are all going to require two readings, so.
So.
Two meetings, yeah, so all of it, I mean, pens will be back, I'm sure. So so that second meeting could help with a second reading, you know, especially if we're getting down to a point where you know, we've got some serious public outcry about these bylaws um and how long it may take us to do an accessory dwelling unit bylaw that we all agree on by the date that we're required to do it on. Um, you know, we've all talked about how long it takes our bylaw process and, you know, the subcommittees, and so, I mean, we're basically looking at in the next three months, having a bylaw in front of someone, planning, board, I mean, to have that thing roll out by February. So I I I don't think two meetings um standing is aggressive. I'll just do a better job of getting those reports in on time. It wasn't on Thursday this week.
It was.
You were on time. You can bank some of those days.
And I think Connor, some of it's gonna be um basically up to you as you put it together, um especially zoning bylaws, uh going through, looking at. Now, obviously, they have to be advertised and stuff, and it may not make it onto the second meeting, so you know it's gonna go on to the first meeting the next month, but I'm good.
I am, Tom.
I think I do like the idea of make making the call at the first meeting if we're gonna have a second meeting, if we can, just.
Yeah, we can certainly in for it and see what happens.
See what happens, yeah.
Okay, great.
Great. If there's nothing else on the calendar, um any action items for the next meeting? The one that comes to mind is, we were originally gonna have an executive session today on the pending legal matters, but given some discussions with Tom on some of those outstanding things, we didn't feel it was appropriate with the information that we had and what could be shared at this point, but that will be coming before us in September. So we will get back to that, but we needed a little bit more time to review and prepare. Does anyone have any other action items?
Yeah, just made made some notes. The council vote for the adoption of the order of the taking, will that be for September tenth?
Likely.
And um Paul Morris said wants to have a second hearing for the hazard mitigation plan. Amy Kaplan on that date. And legislative update, did you want to do that too, September tenth?
I had originally penciled that in, but I think we may push that to the twenty-fourth if we have that second meeting.
Okay.
That way there, that'll give each of us counselors a little more time to prepare any questions or comments that we may have for our state reps. So I suppose in the meantime, before, maybe the next meeting that we have on September tenth, if you have any questions or comments for our state reps, you could send them to Jeanie or I, so we can get those funneled to them.
And did you want to also put on, uh you've got the close of the capital projects, uh get an update on the ones that have been completed and?
Yes, those things penciled in from August will probably shuffle to September.
And those, a lot of those were were done when they closed out FY twenty-four. That's part of their process now is to shoot out the the emails to everybody about the existing capital projects, and if they're done, because they want to close these accounts out, too, if they're just hanging around. It's just an annoying annoyance, basically, so. Yeah, that that's, we can do, we can do a good update on all that.
All right, seeing then, we have no executive session, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
One moves.
Second.
Been made in seconded. Is there any session? And all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Great, we returned at seven sixty-six.
Thank you.
Thanks.